Thank you, if you'll, if you'll welcome to the March Study Session. Ms. Luton, if you'll note that Mrs. Twitty is under the weather tonight and couldn't be here, if you'll please stand and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, I think we've got some great special recognitions tonight, I'll let you take it, Dr. Ritter.
We're going to be recognizing some outstanding principals and staff, so if I may, is Dr. Heckingworth here, please?
I am. Dr. Anderson next to you.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Dr. Prater, members of the board. Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to introduce, we have some fabulous elementary principals here in Springfield, as we well know, each and every year, and we get to honor three of them tonight and want to present them to you, so if I could ask Marilyn Monroe, Adam Metter, and Andrea Frazier to come join me up here for just a moment, please.
That's the first time I've seen Adam dress up like that.
Over here to the right of me, please. Yeah, that's beautiful, thank you. Perfect, perfect. We'll start with Ms. Monroe, who is the principal at Weller Elementary, has been selected as this year's Missouri Distinguished Principal from Springfield District of MASP, she's been with the district since 1988, 12 years as a principal, and currently at Weller, as I said, and she's been recognized for her achievement and honored the importance of, of the elementary principal and what they do for all of our community, so we recognize her for that. Next to Ms. Monroe is Dr. Metter, who's the principal at Bingham Elementary, he has been with us since 2005, and he is Springfield's, this MASP's exemplary new principal for any principal who has been in the system five years or less, is that honor. And then, next to Adam, we have Andrea Frazier, who's been with the district since 2001, and she is the outstanding Assistant Principal who serves at Wilson Creek and Gray Elementary, and if you would join me in recognizing these folks. This weekend, they will be going up to Tantera for the Missouri Association of Elementary School Principals Conference, where they will be recognized in front of all of their peers and, and colleagues from around the state for this honor, and we appreciate their service to the district.
Just a second before you go, Marilyn, of course, is recognized and one of the finalists for our community school, as far as Weller is concerned, but also recognized for her collaboration, and really all of her initiatives and her staff's initiatives around student growth, so fantastic work there. Adam, of course, was also a finalist, as, as far as Bingham is concerned, for, for our community school, and the parents were really the ones that were pushing for that more than anybody else, so anyway, congratulate you, and also the support that we get with you, and so I want to congratulate all of you, thank you. Best of luck to you. Thank you. Dr. Anderson, just a second, weren't you the last state winner from Springfield, yeah?
National winner, yes.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, national.
Every year, Springfield has such strong representation that we are one of 13 districts, so every year, we, our peers are able to nominate one of us as a Missouri's Distinguished Principal, and from that selection, then it goes to national.
So, well, congratulations, I just want to, again, remind the board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Callen.
Yes, um, we were in, we were going to talk about charter schools tonight, and I've had a very heavy couple of weeks with a daughter having surgery and, and some other complicating factors, and with everything else I think that we have on our plate, if the board would not mind postponing that discussion, I would appreciate it, so, I just didn't feel like I would be prepared enough to have it be a meaningful discussion, so I apologize for that, but family comes first.
I agree, and I absolutely need to be brought up to speed, so at some point, we will, we will put you back on the agenda. I don't believe we have any comments tonight from the public, so we'll move to information items, the SPS Learning Model, Ms. Kissinger.
Good evening, Dr. Prater, board and Dr. Ritter, you may recall that in September, we provided an update to you on the SPS Learning Model, and at that time, we reviewed the history of the development of the model, and we also shared four goals with you for our deployment for this current school year. So, our purpose tonight is, is not to review all of that, but to give you a status report on where we are on the four goals that we identified when we reported to you in September. Kind of an important reminder is, and clarification for you, is that the learning model is simply a vehicle to our destination, and our real focus is on preparing students to be successful for the 21st century, so we, our intention is to use the learning model as that vehicle. You may recall these four goals that we had identified for deployment of the learning model during this school year, one was to create teacher and leader awareness, and we've actually expanded that goal some, we are deploying this semester an awareness-learning opportunity for all staff, so by August 15th of 2012, all 3,000-plus employees will have participated in an awareness session, because you may recall that the learning model applies not only for students in our school district, but for adults as well. Second goal was the completion of a configuration for our three key capabilities of critical thinking, communication, and collaboration, we also refer to that as a rubric, and we have some teachers here tonight that you're going to have the opportunity to hear from that have worked many months, many hours on developing that, as well as the third goal, testing it in the classrooms, you, you'll have the opportunity to hear about their work and some of the great things they're doing with students. And then our final goal was to support our library media specialists with some professional learning, and we'll report on where we are with that as well. Our first goal was to create awareness, and Dr. Robin Hagerman facilitated a work team internally to develop that awareness training for our professional educators in the classroom first semester, and she's here tonight to give you a status report on the results of feedback from the teachers that participated in that awareness training, so Dr. Hagerman.
As Mrs. Kissinger said, we deployed a training for all teachers and principals in the first semester this year, and we are very pleased with the, their feedback, we received feedback from 1,591 participants, so we're very happy with our sample size, and we'd like to show you our results. We asked them three questions primarily, things about the training, things about the model itself, and then about their engagement overall with the, with the training. 94% of those participants reported that they thought that the training was organized and easy to follow, they liked the format. One of the findings that we are most pleased with is that 98% said after that video training, they felt very comfortable with the four processes that we identified for our model. As you know, we deployed this as a video training, but we embedded in lots of opportunities for the teachers at the sites to talk to one another, and 97% of the respondents said that that really supported their learning. As for the model itself, 88% said that they thought the visual was clear and that they really got it after the training, which we think is a great number considering this was just an initial overview, and that we have lots of, of future trainings to help them really understand the model. A great question that, that we were pleased with was, you know, if you just went out into the community and somebody said, "Tell me about this learning model," 91% agreed that they, after just this brief training, could really talk to the learning model, which, which we thought was wonderful. 94% got the history and why we're doing this, what the big picture is, and in the end, 79% rated themselves as engaged participants in the training, so we're very pleased with these results, we also got some narrative feedback that we're using as we create future trainings. As Mrs. Kissinger mentioned, last week, we kicked off training for departments, and so we're deploying a, a new round of video training now for all of our department folks, and I believe the suggestion came from you all that we begin to prepare also a video for the community that we can spread, and so that will be the goal for next fall. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hagerman. Our second and third goals, we're going to combine, and, and our teachers are here to report to you, you may recall when Ken Kay was here, those of you that attended the advisory team, he talked about the importance of making sure that our teachers were involved in the development of the descriptors and many of the resources that teachers would use in the classroom. So, our two goals of developing a configuration, and I'll explain a little bit about what that is here in a minute, really were teacher-developed and teacher-tested, and as I said, we have some teachers here that you'll get to hear from in a moment. What does a configuration or rubric look like? What our teachers did was take five key areas of criteria, as you can see those, teacher behavior, lesson design, assessment, the learning environment, and resulting student behaviors, and articulated or described those in what we call a word-picture, a configuration, a rubric, across a continuum from ideal to emerging to limited use, and what this will allow our teachers to do is not only to see what it looks like in an ideal form, but to self-assess and identify where they are, where their classroom is, on the integration or the implementation of the three Cs, and then plan to close the gap. Here is actually just a snapshot of the configuration that our teachers have developed, these are the two criteria of assessment and learning environment, and the intention is not for you to be able to necessarily read the details of that, but to see the detailed work that our teachers have done over the past 12 months and are continuing to do to refine this. One of the most exciting things that came from this teacher group, initially, a lot of school districts have approached this when they've identified their capabilities, for example, if they had identified the three Cs that Springfield Public Schools Community identified of critical thinking, communication, collaboration, they would have a separate rubric or configuration for each of those, which would mean our teachers would be juggling three different documents to be able to deploy or implement a focus on those capabilities. Our teachers wisely are developing one configuration that integrates all three capabilities, so our teachers will only have one resource document describing the implementation of the key capability, so they've done some excellent work on making sure it's effective and efficient in our classrooms. Here's the overall process, and I'm going to let the teachers talk to you about some specifics, but last spring, we had a group of more than 40 teachers that worked intently on developing initially the critical thinking configuration, then a subset of that group of teachers did some action research in their classroom and brought back some feedback and suggestions for refinement. This fall, as I said, we had a group of teachers, some of the previous teachers that worked last spring and some additional teachers this fall, join them to integrate, as I said, the three Cs all into one configuration or rubric, and we have some teachers currently this spring doing action research on that final configuration in classrooms, and the plan is to refine that with, based on their feedback, and then have a final configuration describing the three Cs to all teachers this fall. This time, I'd like to introduce some representatives from that teacher group that have worked on developing the configuration, you're going to have an opportunity to hear from three of them. First of all, let me introduce four teachers that are here that participated, Julia Armstrong from Pipkin, and I'd ask you to stand as I announce you, and then we will celebrate you when I have everyone standing. So, Julia Armstrong Pipkin, Meredith Burston from Phelps, Beth Nickel Bailey, John Shear Ames, Nicole Lemon Central, Pat Quick Central, and Kendall Shores from Weller Elementary. Let's say thank you to this group of teachers who helped develop. You're going to have the opportunity now to hear from three of these teachers, Nicole is going to talk a little bit about the actual process of developing the configurations, and she'll be followed by Pat Quick, who as you know is a chemistry teacher at Central High School, and he's going to talk about the actual use of that in his classroom, and then Kendall Shores is a first-grade elementary teacher at Weller, and she's going to talk about some action research that she's initiating in her classroom with first-grade students. So with that, Nicole Lemon from Central High School.
Good evening, I think what I'm most excited about with the learning model is that we have developed it using the three Cs, so we've used collaboration, communication, and critical thinking to get it going, which is really great. I also appreciate the fact that it has been teacher-driven, and I feel like I've been part of this for a long time, so it's neat to see it finally rolling out. I do want to talk to you just a little bit about the work that it went into it, we don't get a lot of chance to work, at least where I am, with kindergarten and first grade and third grade teachers, so it was very interesting to sit at a table and think, what does cooperation look like in an IB classroom, and what does it look like in a kindergarten classroom, and how do we create a rubric that goes K-12 and all of the different levels that we'll be working with? So I think that was really interesting. We used chart paper and covered a room, and we really talked about teacher behavior, student behavior, and we also talked about environment, so what do classrooms look like? And most of you know I teach media, the picture here is what my classroom looks like, so it's students around a laptop, students around a computer, and I think what the process did for me was it helped me to be more intentional. I naturally think that my classroom lends itself to cooperation, and to communication, and to collaboration, but I wasn't intentionally teaching it, and just through working through these six, these different sessions that we set in on, I got a chance to think about that. So what was great was I didn't just show up to one meeting, and we had to have all the answers in one meeting. We met over time, so I could go back and think, what's working, what's realistic, what isn't working, how is this going to go? So then we're testing the instructional configuration, and my students are saying to me, as I give them the student rubric, and they're saying, "We've always done this, but now we have proof," and I thought, this is really great, and now we have proof that we're doing it, and so I appreciate the process that we've gone through to get to this point. Pat Quick teaches IB science, he's going to talk a little bit more about how the IC works for teachers actually planning lessons.
I too echo the sentiments of Nicole in that it was a pleasure to be able to work in this group to come up with this, and to work with a big group like that, and as you said, talk about how teachers can and will be using this instructional configuration or rubric. You know, most of you with kids have, they've brought home projects to work on, and they have a rubric there that the teacher's giving them, that's what the, they want the project to look like, and how they score it and stuff. Well, this instructional configuration can be used in that way, but it's more as a tool for the teacher than it is to be evaluative from somebody else, and so, as I'm planning a, a lesson, I can look at this ideal category and then build my lesson off of that, and, in looking at it, you know, not every piece has to be in any one given lesson, and so you need to, you know, pick and choose what you need and go from there, and so then we implement that lesson, and then I can go back and evaluate what I did, and look at that honestly and say, "Well, you know, on this, I didn't meet the ideal, I'm still emerging, or this first one, I'm limited, so I need to work on that." And so as I continue to plan my lessons, I can look at where I'm at, see where I want to go, and try to aim towards that ideal, and so it's a, it's a great piece for that. And, you know, Nicole mentioned the word intentional, and that's what this is all about. For me personally, in the classroom, it has made me become more intentional about how I ask the questions to the students, it's not that I want an easy response from them, I want them to think about their answer and how they actually come up with that answer, and if we apply what's on the ideal side of this configuration, that will get us there. And, you know, of course, that's, that's always what we're striving for, and so it's, it's neat to be able to see that and apply that every day in the classroom. Kendall, first-grade teacher, is going to come, and she's going to talk about how she uses it in her classroom.
Okay, I'm going to talk about how I want to use the IC and connect it with my CCI, which is our Continuous Classroom Improvement Plan, so I'm going to connect it with a CCI Math Goal. I'm going to use the five categories of teacher behavior, lesson design, assessment, learning environment, and student behavior, and collaborate with my students by conducting my PDSA, which is what I have the picture of up on the screen for you. I'm going to look at each specific category of the IC and make sure that I'm going to clearly communicate my goals, give my students feedback, and ask higher-order thinking questions, this will be integrated as I conduct my PDSA. The specific goal that I'm going to test with the IC is going to be place value. This week, I'll get feedback from my students about our goal with, we're studying 3D shapes, so I'll get feedback from them, ask them what worked, what didn't work, did we not do something that could have helped them, and I'll take their feedback and put it into my goal that I'm going to tie with my IC. I want to know what it is about certain activities that they tell me that worked, why that helped them, so like this past week, they told me that they really wanted to play showdown, we didn't do that with the last week's goal, and I asked why, and they told me because it gives them immediate feedback, they're able to tell if their answer's right, correct, correct right away, and fix it right away, so it's just immediate, so I took that and we'll do that today, or this week. I'll use their feedback to plan specific activities that will help them with place value and design my lesson based, like I said, off of their feedback. This week, we're working on 3D, 3D shapes, and they mentioned that a whole-class game would help them, so we went on a 3D shape hunt, and it was pretty fun, so. The IC for the three capabilities fits perfectly into what I'm already doing for CCI, so don't feel overwhelmed, it's going to be a great tool for reflection for me as a teacher, and tell me where I'm at and where I need to go.
So in conclusion, two main things I want you to get from the three of us, you have a first-grade teacher, two high school teachers that teach senior-level IB level, doesn't get any higher than that here, we're using the same configuration to come up with the same results in the classroom. Second thing is, we're not giving the teachers something new that they have to learn, it's already embedded in what we do and the training that we've had through CQI, cooperative learning, it just brings that word intention, intentional to that, and kind of focuses in on what we're doing and how we're doing it. That is the great thing about these three Cs, three Cs that I see so far, and as we get into it and we actually roll it out to the entire staff, I think they'll really see that, and they'll grab a hold of that, and really fly with it. Now, this is not the end of the presentation, but, do you have any questions from the three of us at this point?
I know you mentioned several times intentional, and that some, some of you feel like it's something you've already done, it just gives you a structure, or you, you can then have feedback. I have been doing this, I am doing this, and, and you say how well it aligns with CCI. Let me ask you about a teacher, or teachers that may not be as comfortable with CCI at this point in time, how will they feel with this, as will they feel like this is another thing in addition to CCI that they're not as comfortable with, or will this be something that they can embrace and, and feel like is, is helping them to be a better teacher kind of around the CCI topic?
Sure. Well, prime example, I've not had formal training in CCI, that has, rolls through with our Step Up program, and I'm too old for Step Up, but even though without the CCI, yes, this is a tool that I can use. Now, I may have the advantage of that, I was part of the, the team that developed this from the beginning, so I know what's going on, but I, I don't think that that is going to be a major issue, because, you know, we do cooperative learning, and a lot of our teachers do cooperative learning at, at different levels, and this fits right in with that as well, you know, the different activities and, I don't want to say projects, but, you know, projects that, you know, we do will lend itself to that as well, and then just the everyday lesson, once they start reading it and looking at it and think about how their classroom is set up, how they ask the students questions, things like that, it will make it easy to use.
Thank you.
Question and comment, I guess, I, I love the word intentionality, because I, I do think that that is so much about what this is, it's, you know, I've used Nicole as a, as an example of, you know, we're already doing this, mo, most of this, all of this in our classrooms, and I'm sure many, many other teachers are already doing it or have done it, I think the idea is that we know this is the way it needs to be done, you know, we need to get to this higher level, and, and, and so I think it's being intentional about making sure becomes so important. The question I have is, in terms of the, and I think it's also a key piece, is that, is the reflective guides, you talk about the reflective guides and students using it for their own self-assessment, and, and hopefully, students using it to reflect back to the teacher, you know, because you look at the Gates Foundation research that says kids know good teachers better than anybody else, you know, they, they can tell you who the good teachers are, so how, if you can talk a little bit about how you see that being used in classrooms when we roll this out?
Well, I'm using the Student Reflective Guides, testing those now, and like I said, I think the students appreciate that I'm giving them a chance to evaluate how they were cooperatively working, or how they were communicating as a group. Before, I gave them a grade based on what I observed, right? So walking around, I'd say, "Well, it looks like these three students are participating, the students not," now, they can actually put it in writing, and they have a form that they're going to use every time we do this, so they get familiar with it, and we've really developed that and tweaked it, so it's working really well with the students, and it's written, so it's K-12, so all students can be using it, and I think it's helpful because it's not, we didn't design it to be checkmarks, like I do the, like if you get 10 checkmarks, you're a great communicator, you know, it's more of the areas that I did well in, and then the areas I can work on next time, so I think that's working, and students are saying, "Thank you for asking how we're doing with this," instead of just, "I'm all-knowing," you know, they're, they know more than I do about that, so.
And what, if I could, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, talk about that from a, you talked a little bit about it from the first grade, but I'm assuming it's a little more difficult to get first graders to, to report back to you.
It's a lot of prompting, you say it in different ways, the same question in different ways, what worked for you this week, what helped you to, we look at our data, we look and say, you know, you went from a 0% with symmetry to 100%, all of you got it, what worked, obviously something worked, and they are more than willing to give you feedback. It's just, you know, prompting them, for me, is prompting them to get deeper, why did that work? I understand that a game is fun, but what about it? Like I was giving you my showdown illustration, I was just like, it melded in my heart that she said, was saying that it was like, it's instant, you know, I'm like, well, yeah, that makes sense, you know, right away, she knows if her answer's right or wrong, so.
Other questions? I just want to know if I can take chemistry again, Pat.
Wouldn't that be great?
Make that work.
Another piece of the future training with effective feedback to augment, your question, Mr. Hosmer, is that the descriptor of effective feedback is, includes student-to-teacher, teacher-to-student, and student-to-student, so there is that component in the effective feedback piece.
May I just ask a clarification? So, when Nicole was talking about the, the student feedback, and that it's K-12, so we are assuming that somebody who starts with, a student that starts with us in kindergarten and continues on through 12th grade would be very familiar with this tool, it would, so they'll gain familiarity with it, understand its purpose, I mean, I, I like that idea that there's just this, you know, there's, there's just some standards and some, some foundations that are, that are key to, no matter what grade you're in, I like that.
The idea is that it's systemic, it's across the system, and it's systematic, and it's something that can look the same but be applied differently across different grade levels depending on the, the developmental needs and, and the capabilities of the students.
And just one other thing that I thought was really important, when you talk about training, not just the teachers, but the staff, because I know at Roundtree, one of the things with the PYP, or the, is the, the whole staff's in on it, from the, you know, from the kitchen staff to the custodian, to the nurse, to the counselor, everybody's kind of in on it, and, and reflects that to the kids, and, and having that training throughout the staff, I think, just kind of embeds it deeper and getting it out to parents the same way, so. Mr. Lee?
Just following up a little bit what Ms. Callen said, I think one of the things I think one of the things that, that I find really important is that it, because of the K through 12, it is truly established in that culture that, I mean, it, it will be ingrained in the DNA of this district from start to finish. And it becomes, it's just, so it's, it's nothing new. It's just the way we do things in Springfield. And I, and I think that's the important thing of starting, when you started it, it's systemic from K. We didn't start it middle school. We didn't start in high school. We start kindergarten. And when, in 10 years, when you see that, I, I think you can, you'll see incredible results that it's not a project, it's not programmed de jour and then what's gonna happen next week? Let's do something different next week. I, I truly, that's what I think is so important about it. It is culture-driven and it is truly embedded in our DNA is where we're going and how we're gonna have our students learn and teachers learn and teachers instruct. And so, you know, I, I think that's the most important thing about it regardless of what it is, I think the concept of it becoming intentional, whatever the word you wanna use, we live it and it just is absorbed within our system. Uh, and I think that is very critical with something like this, that it's not uh, start and finish. It's the way we are.
Well, thank, thank all of you very much, three of you for giving us the information and, and of course Beth and Julia and Johnson, we're, John in the back there. Beth and Julia, obviously two former Teachers of the Year. Um, thank you all very much for giving us this and for all the, all the staff time that everybody's put in to it.
And I'll, I'll conclude.
Oh, gosh.
And that was a great segue into my conclusion. Obviously you've had the most important part and that was hearing from our professional teachers who are obviously integral to this, this work. But our final goal was professional learning for librarians for this year and that is scheduled for March through the first part of May, so that'll be completed the first week of May. And as um, uh, Mr. Lee just mentioned, the importance of weaving this into the fabric of our district. Uh, we had, this is our guide for deployment planning and we are deep into steps three, four, five, and six, which really have to occur simultaneously. And that's about making sure that we have a, a multi-step, multi-year plan that really will saturate our system. And we have for the past 14 months had a number of feedback loops to develop that deployment plan that included teachers and principals and district staff. We started with our principals in December of two, 2010, asking them what would be the drivers for the learning model in our system, what might be the barriers and what would they suggest we would need to consider? And I'll give you an example, one of the things they said was, we'll have to look at our classroom walkthrough tool and make sure we revise it to align to the learning model. So from that feedback from teachers, principals, and district staff, we have developed a deployment plan that identifies five different systems. And I'll give you just a couple of examples from each of these systems and, and you mentioned something related to this. For this current year for staffing and evaluation, and we have it planned out through, through 15, 16, but for this year for staffing and evaluation, one of the things you may see in the postings coming up this spring is we are making sure we're including language in the posting of every position in Springfield Public Schools aligned to the learning model. So people come to our district understanding that those are capabilities that we expect all adults in the system to either have, preferably when they come to us or be willing to develop as part of our system. Alignment and teaching and learning would be aligning things like P to G, which you hear reports about frequently. Uh, our curriculum guides, our curriculum development council process needs to be aligned to the learning model and then our assessment committee next year will deploy and they'll have the process of revising our assessment plan to make sure we integrate these capabilities and our learning model into our future assessment plan. And our plan is to roll out that assessment plan the same year that the smarter balanced assessments rolled out because we think that will have some implications, obviously, for our assessment of the learning model. So we have a multi-year through 2016 scope and sequence for our deployment plan to saturate all areas of our system. And we would be glad to answer any additional questions that you might have about the learning model.
I just have two things. First of all, on the, congratulations, wonderful presentation, really awesome. Um, I wanna make a comment about Common Core standards and the smarter balanced assessment. Um, have had conversations with Bill Daggett, who kinda heads up a lot of that conversation here recently across the country. And of, of course, they uh, talked about 2014, 2015 is when that's gonna be rolling out. And, and the difference between an ACT test question and a, and a smarter balanced assessment type of test question reeks all with or smells like what we're talking about here. And it's a matter of integration, being able to think critically and it's not gonna be a multiple choice anymore. You're gonna have to be able to write and analyze and look at it. And as you analyze, you're gonna have to be able to do interdisciplinary type of reviews and that's really what that does for us. The other thing I wanna mention, by the way, just on the side, Ray McNulty, who gave the presentation as far as smarter balance and, and also Common Core, uh, did a NAP analysis and showed all the states and where their, their standards were. And of course, this was during a Kansas, Missouri superintendent forum. So there were 50 superintendents there from Kansas, 50 from, from Missouri. And he showed where, where Kansas was like night, number 19. Number 19 mean 19 from the lowest. And then, of course, they were all sitting there and then Missouri is number two. The second highest standard, both in math and in language arts, second to Massachusetts. Huge gap between the two of them. And so what Ray was saying is Missouri should adjust rather easily and so our work here with, with the learning model should adjust rather easily as well, whereas Kansas is gonna have to struggle quite a bit. And so I think there's an example of what, what's in our future for the next two to three years and I think this learning model's gonna help us immensely, so.
Um, one of the things that I heard from all the teachers is that this isn't something additional, this is something that complements and really reinforces things that we're already doing. And I think the other thing that I oftentimes hear from teachers is, we're just putting something else, you're just putting something else on my plate to do this. And you know, what plans are in place to use real classroom teachers to deliver this kind of instruction um, to other classroom teachers? Because I think that sometimes when you hear peer-to-peer, it's a lot more credible than hearing from a professional development staff who's paid to, you know, carry this message forward. So are there any plans to use peer-to-peer kind of instruction?
Yes, um, our deployment plan for uh, training for teachers next year has three phases to it, three parts to it. Right now, our plan is we're gonna use the Walmart donation that we had for $25,000 to produce um, a video for part one and part two, which will be rolling out the instructional configuration that you heard about tonight and also going a little deeper with the four key processes in the learning model. And we have already talked about ways we can um, utilize some of our professional teaching staff to help give examples like you heard tonight, um, so that our other teachers that haven't been as integrally involved in the work can hear from their colleagues who have been. Uh, then the third part of that training will literally be collaborative teams at the schools where there won't be anybody standing up leading training. They'll be working together in collaborative teams identifying which of the key processes they most need to focus on. Is it effective feedback? Is it high expectations? Is it success criteria in the learning goals? Or is it building person-centered relationships or some combination of those? So they will self-select that at their sites and work in collaborative teams for the third part, which is half of the training time for next year. The other thing that we're looking at doing and it's a capacity or resource issue is uh, actually doing some internal videotaping in teachers' classrooms. So we have short clips or snips of teachers that are modeling ways of using um, the learning model in their classrooms, so other teachers uh, can see that from their own classrooms or their own schools, their fellow colleagues. So yes, we, we do have that on our radar.
One final thing that I wanted to say. Uh, I think one thing that we, we also have to keep in mind and this was, I know I brought this up the first time I was at a, a meeting on this, was we have to understand that there's gonna be that butting of heads around MAP and, and around, you know, you wanna do this learning model where you wanna have critical thinking, you wanna have collaboration, you wanna have uh, communication, but then you got MAP. And, and until, we can talk about smarter balanced whatever, but until we either, you know, have a serious discussion about, we all know MAP doesn't get us what it wants, what we want it to get us, so therefore we're gonna put it to the back burner or something, you're gonna have a real problem with telling the teacher on one hand, we want you to do the learning model and tell them on the other hand, you better do well on the MAP test. Uh, because I think those things are, they're mutually exclusive in a lot of respects. So I think as we roll this out and as we talk about this, it's all wonderful, I think we've gotta go this way, but we've got a testing regime in place that will be in place for quite some time. That's gonna be, in many respects, at loggerheads because MAP doesn't particularly care about collaboration and it doesn't particularly care about communication and it doesn't give a darn about critical thinking. So we gotta be careful about that and, and even though I think we've gotta go this way, we gotta have procedures in place to say, we're gonna pull back from this reliance and, and reporting out on MAP. So otherwise you're in for, I think, choppy waters.
Dr. Kishinger, thank you.
And if I may, Dr. Prater, I'd like to excuse our teachers because I'm sure they have parents to call and papers to grade and student work to evaluate. Uh, once again, I really appreciate the time they've put in. You can see they've done an exceptional job and well represent all of our excellent educators.
Dr. Hagerman, thank you too. We have one action item tonight that will require a vote. For uh, cold water, Ryan. Cold water to make cold air.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to present this action item to you this evening. This is for the air-cooled chiller um, at McBride. This was originally installed with phase two addition at McBride back in um, the 98, 99 year. Um, we received four bids on this project. The bid tab is attached. As you can see that uh, Mechanical Services is the low responsible bidder for this project. Malone Finkel Acarton Collins was the engineer for this project. And this would be funded from the major repair budget for the school district and it is the administration's recommendation that the board issues a contract to Mechanical Services Incorporated in the amount of $142,800 for the base bid and alternate two.
Any questions for Mr. Wendt? Ms. Callen?
What's the average life of a chiller?
It's a good question because we were just talking about that.
I will defer that to Mr. Bishop, see if he wants to help me out with that.
I was gonna say around 15 years, but uh...
It just seems like McBride's one of our newer facilities and it seems like this might be...
Right. And typically you get anywhere from 10 to 15 years, uh, depending on quality and grade. It's like asking how long does a refrigerator last, you know? Go by a high point versus something else.
Okay, so this isn't out of the range of, it, it, it hasn't failed us early or...
Well, it's had some problems for some years.
For a while, okay.
Been limping it along.
Okay.
So, we're gonna replace it with a high efficiency unit.
Any other questions? I would take a motion if the board issued a contract to Mechanical Services Inc. for the amount of $142,800 for base bid and alternate number two. Mrs. Callen?
Second.
And Dr. Frederick. Mr. Everest?
Evening, Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Ritter. The action item before you is the Financial Audit Services contract. The prior Financial Audit Services contract expired with the completion of the fiscal year 11 audit. A request for proposal was sent to 21 audit firms. Of the 21 firms, four submitted proposals. Those responses were evaluated using the following criteria, which consisted of experience and performance on comparable engagements, quality of professional management support personnel, and cost of the audit. The Audit Services contract will be for a term of one year with two renewal options. Contract will commence with the fiscal year 12 audit. And it's our recommendation that the Board of Education authorize this administration to enter into a contract with Daniel Jones and Associates to provide audit services to the district in the contractual, contracted amount of $28,000 for a term of one year with an option of two annual renewals of $28,050 each. Have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Everest? Dr. Frederick?
I just have two questions. One, um, your 21 firms that you sent the RFP to, how did you identify those 21 firms? And the second part, I mean, you probably add to this, when um, number four says the responses were evaluated using the criteria, can you speak a little bit more to what that process looked like? Did you use a committee, a team, a task force and was there documented um, some kind of a, a scoring guide? And I, and I realize that you do say that it's based on the cri, the criteria identified, but can you talk a little bit more about that process?
Sure. The 21 firms, uh, we sent it to 10 local firms who, from my past experience, I know does governmental auditing. Uh, also looking through the phone book to make sure I didn't miss any that, that might refer to governmental auditing as well. And then the ele, the other 11 were firms that I know from throughout the state that specialize in governmental auditing, um, as well as we posted it on our purchasing website for anybody else who would like to see that. The uh, second question regarding to the scoring, we had uh, three members, uh, HR Director Parker, uh, Bob Wells, our investment manager, myself. We split it into two main parts. One of them was the experience, performance, and the quality of professional management. We took that aspect aside from the cost and looked at it. The three of us looked at that prior to receiving any of the cost information. After we had scored under those criteria, then we opened the costs and scored that 50% as well. So it was a mixture of both.
So you have documentation of this process?
Absolutely. Yep. It was actually, uh, three firms were fairly close and the fourth firm was, fourth firm was quite a ways away. The top three were all fairly close.
Kasma?
And you said the cost actually was, was 50% of the, of the scoring?
Yes.
Other questions? Let's see, we'll vote on this at the next session, correct? Good. Thank you, Ms. Everest. Um, Mr. Chodas?
Thank you. The district's property, auto, liability, and crime insurance policies will expire on March 31st. We requested that the district's broker, Allison Company, market the district's program in anticipation of a tightening market. Quotes were obtained from multiple carriers. The district's insured property values have increased by 7.4%, which partly contributed to the uh, increase that we experienced. The recommended option is with the district's current carrier, Traveler's Insurance. Um, it includes an increase of 18% or $131,622, which will result in an annual premium of $863,343. To talk about the process and the market conditions, I'd like to invite to the podium Richard Allis, president of Allison Company.
Thank you, Dr. Prater and members of the Board of Education and Dr. Ritter. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'll just briefly uh, go over the marketplace a little bit, uh, the process we use to go out for competitive bids and then lastly, the results that we obtained in the marketplace. Uh, first of all, the state of the market in general is, is certainly firming. Um, and what I mean by that is pricing is trending up in the property and liability marketplace. Last year's storm season nationally has caused uh, property rates to increase significantly and unfortunately, this year, we expect probably some more trend in that particular area. So just like any other business cycle, the property and casualty marketplace ebbs and flows. Uh, in your packet of information is some material about the history of the district's premiums and the um, various levels they've been at over the years. And I might just point out that you can see a trend down in a softening or, or what we call moderate market uh, over the years and certainly we've taken advantage of this as a district. What, what you'll also see um, is... What you'll also see is, is property values, and I don't know if you have this, have continued to rise as the cost of construction, as well as the, the buildings of the district have been added to. In fact, since, since 2004, where we had about $400 million in building value, that has now risen to over $527 million. And you can see the premiums are now back to the level they were in approximately 2004. So that gives you kind of an idea of what's happening in the marketplace. We, this year, in collaboration with the district, went out for competitive quotes in the marketplace. We, we recommend doing this at least every two to three years. We also performed an analysis on the property values and as Mr. Chodas mentioned, those did trend up about 7%. We looked at various deductibles and retentions and we also reviewed the liability exposures. In the property arena, we actually received six options on the property. We also received seven options on the liability. However, in comparison with our current carrier, which again is Travelers, only one liability option really was very viable and that would have caused us to look at increasing our retention from $50,000 to $100,000 and also leave the property standalone with our current carrier with Travelers. So our recommendation to the district was to remain based on not only cost, but also the viability of the total program with Travelers. We are also recommending the consideration of at least exploring the possibility of adding cyber liability to your package. You've probably read in the media and unfortunately, even our own city here recently experienced the unauthorized release of private information. And so we, we have recommended we at least explore this option in adding this to the district's package. In summary, the, the premiums, although increasing, again, are really at the 2004 levels. And certainly, we have experienced this across the board in the marketplace as far as insurance premiums go. Certainly be a, would welcome any questions that you have and want you to know that we very much enjoy our relationship and appreciate our relationship with the school district of Springfield.
Thank you, Mr. Allis. Dr. Ritter?
Didn't Joplin have Travelers?
Yes, we do not handle that particular account, but yes, Joplin School District did have Travelers Insurance.
Okay, so now they're having to go back. It is, you know, lost quite a few buildings through a tornado. And now they have to go back to the taxpayers, even though the insurance rates were there. What's, why did they have to go back, go back to the taxpayers to replace these facilities? Are we covered so that we won't have to do that? That's my question.
I, I am going to go out on a limb here a little bit and speculate because again, we do not handle that relationship.
I know, that's...
However, I will say this. We do a very thorough analysis on property values with the help of Mr. Bishop and we are confident that our property values are in order and also they're blanketed, which essentially means that all the property values, which by the way, again, are over 500 million, half a billion dollars, are blanketed in one limit. And so we've protected the district in that manner as well.
Chasmer?
Meaning we lose one building, then we can use that $500 million?
That, that is exactly right. Yes.
Callen?
You talked about competitive bidding and I assume that our staff will have record of the quotes that you got and so we have the documentation.
Yes. What did the district say about the cyber liability?
Well, we're still in the process of reviewing all terms. Nancy Reagan's our risk manager and where's that standing?
We completed that with a process and we're going to obtain quotes on Richard and I are working together on that.
Sounds to me like we should...
Yeah.
I've been hacked.
Any other questions?
The city, I got hacked through the city.
You got hacked. Any other questions?
I hope you take care of my wife's problems in London, but anyway.
Somebody received an email from Nadine Ritter.
Yeah. Signed by Ritter.
Any other questions for Mr. Allis or Mr. Chodas? Thank you very much for the time you've put into this. You can, you can see the other routine action items listed on board docs along with the minutes of the previous meetings, as well as personnel elections and promotions. I don't believe we have any public comments. I think we can go straight to legislative update. Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee was kind enough to attend the regional school board's president's dinner that we hosted here last night and we had, what, 15 maybe, school board presidents from around the area?
It was well attended.
Yeah, well attended. The nice thing to hear from the Branson School Board Presidents, they lost no buildings and, and had no, don't, no kids in the, in the tornado down there. He was great to update us on the legislative issues, so they're fresh in his mind. Has it changed in 24 hours?
You never know.
Well, obviously, the 300 pound gorilla is the one that everybody's concerned about and that's House Bill 1740, the big omnibus bill that seems to be sitting in the Rules Committee right now and hopefully it will stay there for a while. But, because they don't have the votes right now, to get it out, to get it to the House and so they don't want to do it. But it's, there's a lot of talk about it and it's starting to break apart, is at least the word I hear. But there's, the parties are scrambling, trying to get votes. The filing deadline for candidacy is March 27th. So there's a lot of people that are waiting to see if they're going to have opposition before they decide how they're going to vote. And just not exactly the right way to vote on a bill, but that's tremendous pressure in Jeff City right now on the bill with respect to leadership and who's going to be leadership and chairmans and that kind of thing. So, but as you all know, that had a whole list of different items from tenure to charter schools, vouchers, and a foundation formula, which is really the key Turner fix that, that needs to be done. So they're kind of holding the foundation formula hostage with all the other things of if you wanted foundation fixed, then you're going to have to accept the, the bad medicine with some of the good medicine, so...
Passports, scholarships.
Passport, scholarships, yeah, that's one of them that public dollars go into private schools. I don't know, even, even the part, I mean, it, it seems to be dying of its own weight. And even some of the proponents of the bills inside the omnibus bill are running because they can't accept the other things that are with it. So, and I don't want to go through all the bills that are out there because there's, there's a lot of different ones out there, but certainly the funding issue is going to be an issue right now that really needs to be fixed. And, you know, there's four options out there right now on funding the formula. There's two bills that are out there and another bill that, not another bill, but another option just to freeze the way it was last year and the other ones do nothing. And the problem is, it's an almost a $9 million swing for us, from a $5 million to the bad to a $3 million to the good, depending on where it falls. And it could be anywhere in between. And so it's yet to be seen what's going to happen. They go on spring break next week, so we're at least safe for a week and we'll see what happens there. But there are several other bills that, that's getting some attention and a lot of people are going, well, if I take this out, will you pass it? Will you support it? Lot of jockeying going on right now in Jeff City. And I mean, one thing, if you're interested, MSBA is having one of their, well, School Board Advocacy Network, which is an opportunity for Region 10, which is our region, to go to Jeff City on March 20th. If any of the board would like to go up there on March 20th, they're welcome to go. I have got an offer from NIXA, if you might want to ride the van with their board, they've got room. So it's a good opportunity to go to Jeff City. How thrilling can that be to do that? So if any of you would like to do that, let me know and I can get with them if you, if you'd like to ride up there. But it's pretty much all day.
I think that's spring break. Am I right?
Yeah. And so the only other thing I'd bring up is, as you all know, the waiver request has been turned in by Missouri for the NCLB waiver. Who knows? Well, how, what that will be and whether the waiver actually meets Department of Education's requirements. We'll see how that, how that plays out. But everyone's scrambling to turn in waivers now to do that.
The other thing I would bring up is the Turner fix and Representative Long is working with Kansas City, which is great. I mean, St. Louis, which is really great. And that is to put language together to work that Turner fix to where kids or students go to accredited schools within their own district. And, and so hopefully that's going to be, because I, I do believe St. Louis feels they have room for that. And now that's going to take the, the private school out of the picture and of course, that's, that's fine. The, the only other thing is, is that included in that language, of course, is to have children, if they're going to go to an accredited district, they must go to an accredited school. And that's the kind of language that St. Louis wants to support as well. So anyway, I, I think that's getting some pretty good traction and hopefully that's, if that does, that's going to save us, save the state, I think, or St. Louis and the state an awful lot of money. So I don't know if you're hearing anything more on that, Bruce, or not, Mr. Ritter. So, but anyway, that's the latest I've heard on that and we'll see where that goes.
I would make one comment about the waiver, just from the standpoint of concern. You know, we've been under NCLB and all that for years. We, we do the waiver. ESEA gets approved sometime, waivers go out the window. So the, the risk of having three different systems to follow in three years is a potential risk. That we run to one rule, change the rules, and it's another rule in, in three years. That, you do what you got to do because NCLB is just horrible, but that's a risk depending on if ESEA gets approved and how they do that. So, you know, that, people are kind of realizing that, oh my goodness, we could have three systems in three years if we're not careful. So, but you could, you do what you got to do at the time. You got to make a decision.
Ms. Callen?
I'd just like to say that I was able to make a phone call last week to Representative Long's office and I really appreciate our local legislators, the ones that have listened to us and listened to the patrons here in Springfield. The number 1740, right? Is that the?
Yes.
Yeah. And I, you know, I think we just really need to recognize them. I know some of them are going against great party pressure and, you know, he, his office was the only one I talked to, but I didn't really have to say too much and they said he's not for it, so.
And the other, the other legislative issue is that 1174 passed the House and has gone through the Senate? It's in the Senate now?
It's in the Senate now, which should not be a problem. It should go through without any, that's the DESI bill where accelerates the DESI providing intervention for unaccredited districts. And, you know, I know, I know some people may not like that, but I'll just be honest, it's worked in St. Louis. St. Louis has, you know, as we've said before, the 13 kids from being accredited, they've made tremendous strides and it's worked there. So, you know, if they can have the same kind of results in Kansas City, wonderful. I don't know what the intervention will be, but I think that bill's going to go through fairly easily. Everybody's supporting that.
Get a legislative, good. Future issues, obviously, one topic front and center on our minds is the response to the, to the recently released state audit. And as you all are aware, the frustrating catch-22 of this whole system is being instructed by the auditor's office not to speak about the audit publicly until last Friday. And if we can't speak publicly, the board doesn't speak. So we've, we've been gagged for a while. What, what I would like to do with, with your permission is to use the information items session of the March 27th board meeting to, to start, to get the, the basics of an outline of an action plan for staff to provide us the information we need and so we can begin to address the findings of the state audit. And I thought tonight, staff might want to hear from us as to some of our priorities, some of the information we may need, some of the financial information that we want so that we're prepared for the discussion. And if you don't have any specifics tonight, get them to me and I can pass them on to Dr. Ritter and staff. And I'll start off, I just thought of, of two. Obviously, one is, I think we need a, a budget estimate for and the timeframe of the, the hiring of an internal auditor. So we'd like some response on that. And the other thing that, that I thought was top on, on my list would be what policy changes does the board need to make in order to assure, ensure compliance with best practices in accounting and in payroll procedures? Some of the things that were addressed in the audit are, do we need to specifically address any of those in our board policies? So those two I thought of, I'm sure everybody else has one or two or three. Ms. Callen?
Well, I have more than that, but that's just kind of...
Okay. I'll cut you off in a while.
Uh, yeah. Get the hook out. No, I just want to say, you know, I've heard in various, from, through various means, you know, probably phone calls, emails, personal contact from maybe about 10 different patrons about the audit. And the reaction has, has just run the, the whole spectrum in terms of, you know, people who think it's ridiculous and a witch hunt to people who are convinced that there's still fraud that hasn't been discovered. And, you know, I think as a board member, it's my responsibility to take both of those emotions out of the discussion and get to the facts. And so, you know, I've spent some time over the weekend thinking in each of these areas, the things that I still need to maybe understand even some of the findings. So, so I've just kind of gone through the, the list. But in, in terms of the health trust, you know, just maybe, how can we keep that information out in front of the board? You know, whether it's included in the treasurer's report every month to us, you know, just something that, that's...
Part of the ongoing systems review.
Yeah. I think that needs to be something that, you know, we, we get it, we look at it, but I think it needs to be part of our discussion, particularly since we feel like we've made some steps with the help of our employees, you know, and, and the cooperation of our employees. So in terms of the area of cash control, I'm interested, and I know a friend of mine on the Missouri School Boards Association Board is in Ralla and he's talked about them going to pretty much a cashless system where you really reduce the amount of cash that's in, that flows through the system. I'm interested in knowing, are there software systems out there that provide that? What are the limitations to our families that might not have access to electronic means of transferring funds? But I'm sure we're not, I know we are not the only district that struggles with cash control, especially if you have 55 sites.
Yeah.
In terms of the bond leasing, see if I can read my own writing here. You know, the, the overspending on the bond is something that we identified internally and then was reported on the, the audit. I would just like to have an update on what changes have been made to ensure that that doesn't happen again. In terms of the real estate transactions, I'd like clarification about whether Hickory Hills, the old Hickory Hill site is still on the market. I think there was some reference made in the audit presentation that implied that it wasn't, you know, and that we were dealing with an exclusive contract. And it's been my understanding that we're not dealing with an exclusive contract, so I'd like some clarification there. And I think this next one is something, and I appreciate, you know, one of the people I heard from is an employee, you know, who cares about this district a lot and wants us to be successful. And it kind of goes back to what Dr. Prater was saying. was saying, you know, this person was saying, I follow the policies and procedures of purchasing. I follow the policies and procedures of, you know, how I need to do things. So I guess what I need to know is, are the proper policies and procedures in place? And if they are, how can they be better enforced in these particular instances that were identified? Yeah. I'd be interested in knowing the process that sets in place the issuance of a manual check. I don't think I really have an understanding as a board member of the difference there. And so to to understand that finding and that, I need some information there. Clarification on why we bid certain professional services and why we don't bid others. I think that, I mean, we just dealt with a bid tonight of a professional service. So, you know, what the parameters are there. I'd like some information on how we interface with our substitute service provider and how, you know, I I don't, I don't understand, or I don't have a good understanding of the findings there and and what may have gone wrong or what, you know, didn't go wrong. And then in terms of the sunshine law, which I think as board members, that's probably where we bear the greatest responsibility. I'll say I bear the greatest responsibility in terms of making sure that the deficiencies that were identified there are rectified. And I think I know what happened in those particular cases. I think those were meetings that we specifically were called to go into executive session. And I went back and asked to see if we had properly posted notice of those meetings. And we had. And then I have minutes of the executive session. So I know minutes were taken of the executive session. What appears to be missing is there was no documentation that we met.
This room first.
We met here or we even met in that back room openly. So first, so I just need to know before I think about, are there better ways for us to handle our executive session, whether it's timing, whether we don't do it after the meeting, whether we do it before? You know, a lot of districts do it before. I mean, they they meet. So I guess I just need to make sure that that is exactly what happened in those cases. And and then maybe a recommendation in terms of who's present in those meetings to ensure that the minutes are consistently taken. So that's my two or three.
Right. That was good, two or three.
That was good.
Yes, Mr. Hosmer.
Couple of things. One thing that I I would like is, it seems like from the responses that we gave and from what I read in the in the report, a lot of these things that were identified, we either have taken steps to rectify or have no issue taking steps, recognized, taking steps to rectify. So I guess what I'd like to get from the administration is a shortened version of the issues that are kind of still out there. And, you know, I come from the standpoint, I think of, you know, whether or not this was worth $180,000 and all the time that's water under the bridge, let's look forward and and get as much good out of what's been done as possible. And, you know, some of these things, as Chris said, some of these things seem to be, you know, they deemed us for that. Come on. And then some of these things are, yeah, we need to, we need to tighten that up. That's that's an issue. So what I certainly want us to do is to is to try to, you know, differentiate between between those two and do things that need to be done and get as, like I said, get as much value out of this as possible. To that end, I think, and and the number of board members at this around this table have have asked, you know, or talked about the importance of an internal auditor that it reports to the board. I think it's a great idea. Not only is it a good, do I think it's a good idea, but I think it's a it's a person that could then go back and talk to us about these other findings and say, hey, that's a really good idea. That's going to save you some time and money. That's not such a good idea. That's not going to save you some time and money. So I think even though that's the last thing mentioned in the audit, my understanding is they mention these from most serious to least serious, since even though it was the last one mentioned, I kind of sit here thinking that that as a board member, I'd like to have that person, I'd like to have that person reporting to the board. And I think that kind of gives a sense of satisfaction to the community as well, even though, you know, even though, you know, as this audit showed, there's no fraud going on, there's no misappropriation going on, there's no, you know, embezzlement going on. But but there are things that need to be tightened up. And and as a board, sometimes we're not the the best people to know what needs to be tightened up and when, because we come from all different backgrounds. We're not, you know, we're not school administrators. So I think having that expertise would certainly help me as a as a board member.
The others. Mr. Renner.
You know, I guess each one of these areas has a recommendation by the auditor. I mean, I'm just looking at one here, 7.1, you know, and 7.2. And we say what we're going to do, but their last sentence said, the board should ensure mileage logs are maintained for our district vehicles. And we say, we will consider the need for mileage logs. Well, that's a difference. That's, to me, it's a difference. They're saying you should do it. And we're saying we're going to consider it. Then they say, you're going to establish policies and procedures and maintain documentation regarding the need for charter bus service. And we say, we'll consider the need for maintaining documentation. It would seem like to me and some others, we say, we're going to do exactly what they say. I mean, they say, do this. And we say, we've done it. I mean, it's the exact same words. So if it's the exact same words, then that ought to be checked off. That's what we're going to do, you know? But if we're going to do something different, then I guess I'm I'm interested why on any of the 51, we're not going to do that. Because when it says, we will consider the need, and they say, you need to do it, then why are we just considering it? And why wouldn't we? So, you know, and I don't know, because that that first one is just amazing to me as much as we did with our health. And and we go over that. And we know, I mean, as a board member, I knew exactly the decisions we made and where we were and what we did. And it's just amazing to me that you look at that and then that's a finding. Well, we knew it and we've already taken care of it. So but I want to make sure if we're going to do something different than the auditor recommends, I I would feel more comfortable in knowing why we're doing something.
Let's not, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, though. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves tonight because really, we don't want to take action on the audit items.
No, I don't want to take any action. I want somebody to.
But I think I think it's helpful for us to remember and staff to remember that some of these items do require board intervention. And the and the board has not yet met to intervene on the items. And so until, and that's one reason in my discussion tonight, is until we have information from staff on the cost, feasibility, legality in some cases of of these items, I don't think that we as a board can can make those decisions. So that's why I would hope that staff can 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 fill in some gaps for us in our knowledge. Because I do think, I agree with Bruce, we take we take this seriously. We want to do the right thing. But now we have to get some information and be able to.
We have to wordsmith this whole thing. I mean, I I'm, the way it is, if one word is different, somebody's going to.
You missed it.
Think we're subversive and doing something different. So I I just think it's very important that we look at what they do. And then, you're right, they come to us and explain. If it's not their exact words, then why are we not, why are we not? And and that may be the cost. I don't know why.
Well, no, it's we're up to mischief. That was the wording the other night. Let me let me, I'll come back to you, Annie, if we have time. Good.
I kind of want to reinforce. I think one of the things or something I would like to see would be, you know, the 51 recommendations, the ones that are already done.
Yeah.
Get them off the table. We don't even need to talk about them. The ones that are maybe shorter term and then longer term, that, I mean, some of them you just can't do in a week.
In 90 days.
You can't even do it in 90 days. But that doesn't mean we're not going to do them. That just means it's more planning that's going to require that to happen. So, you know, I with Mr. Hosmer's comment, I really think that, you know, we have a good audit. A lot of things in there that we can really build upon, improve our processes, become more efficient, more effective. We need to be doing that. We need to get out of the political rhetoric now, put that aside and and separate the two. Now it's time to take the audit and use what's in it to help our kids and our fiduciary responsibilities we have as a board and improve those processes. And and I think they're there. And I think that's the thing we need to do is deal in the facts and get out of the rhetoric and deal with that. But I'd love to see us not spend any time on the things we're already done. Just forget that. I mean, those are done and water under the bridge and 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 go and and really have some discussion about those. And there's something that concerned me. I don't know how we get to here to here and do it reasonable, cost effectively and all that. And that's fine. I think that discussion needs to be had. But I'd like to somewhat segregate that so that we can focus on those that are, I don't want to say more urgent, but maybe can dealt with quicker, get it done, put a plan together. And then the one thing I don't want to do is a knee jerk reaction on this thing. I want to do it very strategically and think to the, and do it right.
Yep.
I don't want to just do it because. I want to do it because it's the right thing to do and do it the right way and and get it done. So.
More you want to add?
I think maybe as far as the additional information, what's really important to me is there's some, some, I think, kind of vague language in terms of our response of infractions that would result in disciplinary action. And I think as a board member, I would like to know a few more detail, more details about that, because those issues may be coming back to us as a board and dealing with some of those disciplinary actions. And also, again, the additional staffing that's included with several of the recommendations or several of our responses, what are those positions going to look like? And what and can one position, I know there's a lot of discussion on segregation of duties, but could one position, we take care of a few of those items that and how that would look in terms of our budget? So just more information would be really important for me on those, as well as everything else that's been discussed, those two items.
Good. Got any new others?
Well, just follow up on a couple of comments. I think it's important that we make the changes that are going to be effective. And many of these changes will be effective for this district. Some of these changes may not be effective. And, you know, as an example, if you have a $50 petty cash fund in a school, it doesn't make sense to hire somebody $40,000 a year to watch over that $50 petty cash fund. Now, it may be a real good way to ensure that nobody dips into the $50 petty cash fund, but it just doesn't make sense for the 24,000 students that we serve. So.
Let's let's not go there yet. Let's gather information.
But and and I think it goes to Bruce's point of, you know, if there's a specific cost.
Right.
Benefit to this, then do that. The other thing that I that I hope we do is we use this as a springboard to discuss some of these bigger issues, because it has raised some bigger issues about how we purchase contracts, how we purchase goods, and how we how we accept bids, things of that nature that I hope that we can use to not just try to check these things off the list, but we also can use as a way to start having a discussion about whether there's a better way to look at some of these bigger pictures.
And Mrs. Twitty spoke with me about that yesterday. And she, I think, would want some information on best practices. And I think Mr. Everest and Mr. Chodas both have the experience for this. Best practices in governmental entities in terms of bidding versus RFPs and and professional selection. So some information on that nature would be would be helpful. And 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 let me say that any other things that that you all think of get to me, and I'll be sitting down with Dr. Ritter pretty soon.
Right.
And we'll start start kind of trying to craft a a action plan that that makes sense and doesn't, as we're running helter skelter.
If I may respond to Mr. Hosmer a little bit and also to the board, I really appreciate all this information. We needed some kind of direction. So this helps a lot. I had a conversation with our about 12 Baldridge examiners today, and we went through this discussion. How do we react? Because we've had several audits, but different types of audits. We had a we had a systems audit several years ago, and we have, of course, a financial audit. And so how do you approach this? How do businesses, auditors, Baldridge, approach it? And it goes along the same line that you were suggesting, Mr. Hosmer, is that you take the data, you take the information, and and you look at what's recommended. And then you take and you look at what's really working well, the strengths, which we don't see in this. And you have to take the strengths. And then you balance that up against the opportunities for improvement. And you got to stay away from being too prescriptive. Okay? When you're prescriptive, then you're you're losing sight of of the whole system. And so I do think, though, there are some prescriptions in this audit that are very helpful. But I do think we need to look at the greater system, okay, and see how we can improve. And 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 so in our response to that, as far as continuous improvement, I think our response then will be, and, you know, this is what the audit said, this is what the recommendations were, this is our response, this is actually what's happening. Okay? This is our opportunity for improvement. And this, and of course, this is the PDSA or the plan. And then eventually, the board supports that. And you're the oversight of this, not me. Because it's been given to you, I think you serve as oversight. So I really appreciate the conversation we'll have. And it's very clear direction. And we'll we'll take it from here and and get back to you on the 27th.
27. Great. Thank you all very much for comments. One other issue that I have, and I've forgotten if this needs to be a vote or an appointment, to appoint Mrs. Callen to be our delegate to the MSBA.
That delegate representative.
Is that a consensus?
Representative.
What is it called?
The.
For the Board of Directors. It's the Springfield representative.
Yeah. Is that a consensus item or an election?
I think it's just consensus.
Well, seeing phenomenally good consensus on Mrs. Callen serving us in that role, we'll proceed ahead with that.
Thank you. It's something I really have grown to enjoy.
Good. Well, and we're glad you're there. And we're glad Mr. Lee's there, too. I don't have any other items. Anybody else?
Future issues. God, I have another one.
Plus deltas, please. There's no need for an executive session tonight for any of the reasons listed on our board docs. And we may adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got a text halfway through the meeting. Daughter who graduated from college this year, she got offered a teacher.
So when it comes to voting, I'll make your.
I would think it's going to be a college, I'm not sure. It was my fifth region out of 10 choices. So I definitely have to think about it, but I have until the 19.
It's a conflict. I was going to talk about that.
So.
Here's a lot of.
Even that big of an insurance claim, and I just don't want any perception of my authority.
And I just saw.
Graduated from Duke with.